Okay, 2015. We have another same documents except for 2015. And then this is to prepare our temporary budget with the ten years in March. Let me just start by saying, again, you know, having a deficit expectation is that the city will work the deficit down and we can't just stay status quo. So it's gonna be incumbent upon the city each year, if you will, to save money to apply towards the deficit. So breaking even will not get us where we need to be to get out of the deficit. So this budget, it may look harsh. The way the general fund is looking in terms of these projections, we should be able to save about half a million dollars to apply to this, you know, current deficit. And then that's the goal in terms of getting out of fiscal watch, is that each year you would decrease the deficit until it's gone. So you have to budget less expenditures than revenue with an excess, you can't just break even. I tried to the best of my knowledge in terms of the 14 to include all bills that's out there so we won't have this carryover into 15. Like I say, you know, we're still six weeks away from the end of the year, but that was the attempt so that next year we won't be paying a half a million dollars of bills from our 2015 revenue. So hopefully whatever we have for 2015, it can be used for 2015. So at this point, I need to start by saying, as usual, in terms of the special funds, I need to talk with Mr. Ed Renn to get a handle on what the projects. So the special revenues, when it comes to those capital improvement, will probably have to be tweaked some, so just so you know before we get to that point. The general fund, like I say, at this point, projected a lot less revenue, but also a lot less expenses so that we could show at least about a half a million dollar surplus to go against the 2.8, you know, million whatever the number ends up to be. Then also the other attempt, what you see, is that the deficit will be confined to one fund, to the general fund, it won't be spread all out. So when you look at the general fund, it looks awful, that's because it's absorbing, you know, all of the other deficits and hopefully the other funds are budgeted to spend whatever income comes in from the government, the taxes and what have you. And that had not been the case in the last few years, we were spending maybe about $200,000 or $300,000 in some of those special revenue funds than we actually received revenue for. So, but then only place to move those expenses would be back to the general fund. So if you would like to look at your estimated resources, since we entered a new year, 11 dropped off, so we have the 12, 13, which you saw on the treatments pages. And then the estimated resources for January through December, which is the number that I'm asking for approval, which is from the prior 2014 information that you had. So the next column, the 2015 estimated resources. This is the number that's being projected for 2015. And a lot of instances, to be conservative for the revenue, the number may have moved back to the original projection of 15 versus reflecting the actual that's being received. The estimated resource for January through December pretty much reflects what we've actually received for the year, the white column that says estimated resources. But for the 2015, you know, I dropped those just in case, so it's always better to have more, the budget less than to have more. And you have the same comparison, the difference between January through December and what's being projected for 2015. So again, there's that Rita issue, you know, like I say. And I didn't even budget anything for city collected income tax, I mean, you know, that we'll see what happens with that. And as you move down the line, you can see where the differences are. Like the estate tax, there was nothing budgeted for that. We received that this year, but I had not anticipated it because we've been told that that was going away with the new Miami state budget. So I'd rather receive it than not have it. I mean, have it than to project it, you know, and then not get it. The local government, that number 704 is the number that was sent to me from the Budget Commission to say, this is what your government allocation would be, and it's more than what it was last year in terms of the projected number. But as you can see, we actually received $717,000. But I prefer just to budget what they say they're gonna give us, and if we get more, we get more.
Irene, if I could just ask you a question, when we were talking about the estate tax, I heard that, you know, homestead is status quo for people that have been grandfathered in, new applicants have to apply, but I heard they're gonna eliminate the 2.5 rollback? So is that gonna hurt us, or is that included in this?
No.
Very small amount, but it adds up.
Well, that's for a reason I project less for property taxes, you know, than what we actually received. What you can see is $105,000 less than what we actually received for this year, and I think, like I say, that's a small amount that we receive for homestead. I mean, you know, this should cover it if there is any changes. So you can see where the holes are, wherever there's blanks, that means that money that we received in 2014, which is in the column right, is projected not to come. And that's the senior program, I mean, we've been talking about that for the most part. You know, at this point, in order to get the budget in, based on whatever your recommendations or changes, I mean, you know, this is a working document for you, so it was not budgeted in, the revenue from the senior program.
So are we closing the senior center then? Because that includes the onsite meals and the deliveries, and if that's not projected in 2015, can we explain to that?
The mayor would have to explain whether we're gonna close it or not, but basically my instructions is that, I mean, you know, we're not projecting anything, not whether it closes or not.
If the mayor would like to address that.
What would you like to know?
I would like to know if there is maybe a cut in hours or days that the senior center may be open, or if there's, is it just gonna close down since we're not budgeting for transportation or onsite meals or delivered meals? I know levy didn't pass, and it has something to do with their budget.
Well, you're right, that doesn't, but, you know, Linda and I can talk at some point about trying to keep some things going, but, you know, as you know, the money is, that comes in in the grant is tied to the meals and the trips. So if you reduce the trips and the meals, then that money shrinks and ultimately it will go away. Now, if you, you as council want to transfer the railroad money into the senior fund and keep it going, you know, there's, I believe, 168 provisional ballots that have yet to be counted, or that are being counted, and if by chance that does pass, you know, some of that money might come in by the end of the year.
Next year.
No, I'm talking about the end of this, or yeah, the end of next year, right. So, you know, that's, that's a lifeline if you want to do that. You want to do that?
We could consider that if we really look over the contract for the railroads, just to make sure that we, except for something that we're not supposed to be.
I can't imagine why. I have the contract and everything, all that documentation at home, I think you probably do also.
I'm not an attorney, Mr. Blair, if there's our terminations agreed, give us a memo stating that we're legally receiving that money from Norfolk Southern.
And if we are, would council agree to transfer the money to the...
Sure.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Does everybody agree with that?
Maybe through ballots. That's what you can see, we only need 40-some votes.
Well, even so, you still have that gap between now and when it's collected, so yes.
We can always put it back on a ballot. We could take that up. We should.
That's gonna be a 17, so we're talking.
We have to hold it.
Madam President, I believe in this budget, there's money, budget is for the election, the general of next year, I don't think that money includes a special election in May or any other month. So everything comes to work with that.
Right, right. The soonest you could get the levy on would be May.
$300,000?
Yeah, I know. But you could get it.
And the money would start flowing in what year?
Well, if it passed, if it passed in May, they would, they might be able to start collecting July 1st, because that happened once before, when it passed in the spring. But if they collect July 1st, 2015, you still wouldn't get it until January of 2016.
Or July 1st. Yeah, the second half.
Yeah, July.
So that'll be like 18 months that you'll have to sign, you know, to keep it going. And just be mindful that the revenue is pretty much, in terms of total, is set, so that we add in one place and we have to subtract from somewhere else. You just keep that in mind, okay? That if we're gonna add expenses, then we'll have to look somewhere else to subtract. Right, right, we just need to share that.
Anthony?
Just to answer the general question about the senior center, if you look at the appropriations, it pretty much basically says everything is gonna be closed or eliminated. Senior services, nutrition services, senior transportation.
All through this.
Yeah, so that's pretty much self-explanatory right there, I mean, there is a lot that goes on through the center, but that's the three main budgets.
Question, Mayor, Madam President.
Okay.
If, if we decide we want to put something on a ballot, we went to the county and met, can we go to the county again and ask for a advance if something would pass to keep the senior center open? Would we, could we ask for an advance and get it, say, half or something, that amount of money that we take?
We did that already. We did that last year, but you unfortunately didn't know about that. There's also something where the county is gonna be selling the tax leads, we might be able to get a portion of that, but I don't know how soon that happens. Our cut out of property taxes is not as much as the city, as the schools get, so we're not talking some big money either.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
I think unfortunately, if you want to keep the center open, I don't think we can bank on it, let it pass. If we wanna keep this place open, we're gonna have to come up with cuts somewhere else that would guarantee that it's open versus open that a levy passes. And even in that, whatever we cut, is gonna be tough on that department or those protected employees or whatever. So we're really between a rock and a rock.
Go ahead, Anthony.
Just look at the appropriations, I mean, I'm jumping ahead of Irene here, but, I mean, you're talking $9,000 in police, 1.4 in just the fire department, those are cut already, are going to be cut in 15 to balance the budget, add in the senior center. I mean, if you want six people to be police and six people to be fire, I mean, unfortunately, this is where the tough choices are gonna have to be made, and this is where I said at the council meeting, this is the black and white, excuse me, the black and white of it, I mean, we're not gonna be fan favorites.
No, the voters spoke.
I know they did, and this is the choice that we're dealt with.
Well, we can discuss that after we count the ballots, and just pray to God that we get the count, we can pick up that 40 votes. If not, then we got discussions, we gotta make a hard decision.
Linda, can you, yes? The money that is poured into through grants and through the senior services coming, they're not reflected here?
They are.
Oh, they are, okay. So that's the sum total?
Yes.
If I may, I think Linda and I made extensively about this, and I think that the numbers we came up with pretty much is that we receive $100,000, about $100,000 per se.
A little more than that.
Yeah, from the grants, and it costs $4 to run the program, so that means that $300,000 will have to come from some other places to subsidize it. I mean, we talked about that, so.
So closing the senior center, we see a net gain of about $300,000 roughly?
Well, that's incorporated, right, because, like I say, it comes out of the general fund. I mean, the expenses are being charged to the general fund, so it just goes in the wash. But when you said now, net about it, I think we said, like you said, maybe a little over $100,000 came in directly from external sources, and the other $300,200 were, you know, funded.
Madam Chair, the, that phrase, net gain? It's a loss. It's a loss. Saying net gain is not the right, I'm wanting to say right, not the right terminology, but it's not the right terminology. I just don't talk about anything in this thing as being a game. One-line item, it might look like it's sold, but this whole budget is a loss to the city, to every resident here.
We have to understand also that we lost about 40 votes for the senior center. If I still go back two more days, we've got a hung come up. So the residents, if they knew, they came in mad or whatever, if they knew the vote would be taken today, I think we would get the vote for the senior center. Because I heard a number of people say it. Only knew, you know, I didn't know. I thought with the cameras, bucked me off, it was no, it was yes, so I just did it right there. If I hadn't filled that out, I would vote for it. And I even pulled out our pie, and how much it would cost for the levying stickers to show different people because they're asking, which was minimal, to keep the center open, they would do it today if they had a ballot. Not counting that there might be some go against it. But the sole purpose of the senior center should be no reason if the residents said they wanted to go against it.
If we go back to Tony's question just a few minutes ago, if, if we have an opportunity to transfer money and to prop up the senior center for the period of time while we're waiting for revenue to come in, is everybody agreeable, or most people agreeable to look at that?
I think somebody would have to look at is how else that money might be used.
Where would you, where would you use it besides the senior center?
Well, we just had a car accident on Rockside Bridge, Rockside Road Bridge, and the other night, Libby Road Bridge was just as icy. Those are, those are symptoms of our financial distress, not just the senior center.
So you would work, you would work for getting salt on the streets rather than servicing the people?
I'm right, I would.
Okay, first of all, the Rockside Bridge is not, does not belong to us?
I understand that.
Okay, good.
But we have other things to do than just worry about one segment of our population, which is those being cared for by the senior center. Madam Chair, I would think that council has not counted on that money being there. Yeah, I would think we would have. Now, in future, or anything, because I'm pretty positive that that contract is supposed to end in 2010.
You know, I'm gonna go back and look and we'll ask about John.
I think it's a moot point, but I think the 155 or whatever it is, it's just a Band-Aid.
Well, right, right.
Yeah, and I understand, and, you know.
You probably have layoffs coming in the air road, and it's just automatic.
Yeah, probably.
Which is fine.
I just don't think you can equate putting salt on the streets with keeping the senior center open, because it isn't just feeding seniors, it's servicing the people who, and all of the other things that come out of this center, it isn't just meals. It's all the services that the people in this community get.
Is that your only meal a day?
Say what?
Is that your only meal a day?
For some, for some it is. I, I'm not downgrading the importance of the meal.
No, I understand.
But I'm saying it, it just isn't.
Well, Cleveland wants days to get plowed, so that's just the cruel reality. They also have to wait, and they also have to, where they do triage their police and fire calls. And that's normal.
I'm sorry.
Cleveland does the police and fire like a triage. Calls come in, and some people in Cleveland have to wait days to get their streets plowed, that's side streets, and the main thing is just to get the main roads done. And that's the normal in Cleveland, and that's the normal. People are used to having services that they may not receive anymore because of the election. And they're gonna have to live with it.
Don't think they need to be bitter about it.
I'm not bitter.
I think they should be addressing their passion. Point of order, man? What page are you on again? The estimates, right?
Yeah, one of the estimates, you had to the appropriations, but...
Yeah, I'm sorry. Set moot point.
That's right. Yeah, on page one, just basically going down a highlight, and I think we stopped at the senior. I mean, that's where we stopped, and of course, the next big hole is the cameras, you'll see that, you know, that's a big hole.
Next, senior.
Page two, we'll be right along. One of the things you should see in the description column, you see a yellow, this mine is yellow, a highlight, and just there, and we had many discussions about this since it's a subject, but I did an analysis which I could show that, you know, we really do, if we could, put that back as a recovery item, the garbage collection, to offset some of the other losses that we have, such as the money that won't be given from the contingency fund and the cameras and all of that. It's just there. In an analysis, we can show you that, you know, we could put that back on, I was getting with Attorney General, because I talked to them last week before, and they were coming this year. Yeah, they just needed to see that there would be money, of course, it has to be approved by council, we're not transferring anything in here. So just there has for the retribution.
Ms. Kroll?
Yes.
I would warn against two of the items on here, which is the railroad retribution, $150,000, and the transfer in from the garbage fund of $200,000. I have serious questions about the legality of both of those. And that's $350,000. If we remove that, $350,000, we're, we're pretty darned close to breaking even again. So we need to really reconsider counting this money, counting on this money to be used to bring, to keep our head above water, because I really seriously doubt the legality of being able to use these monies in our general fund.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
In terms of the railroad, I guess I wanted to hear from council, whoever has the contract. The other is not illegal, only uses of vote, legislation from council, which makes it legal. This was not automatically legal either.
I understand.
Okay, but it's not illegal. The legality comes with legislation approved by this body.
No, the legality comes with collecting something as a fee and then using it for general expenses. That's the legal issue. This is collected as a fee for a specific service, which is curbside pickup and recycling, to then try and use this for something else, there would be very serious legal questions regarding that.
Like I say, the major responsibility, so it's involved.
Well, if we, if we judge again, and we expect monies to come in that don't come in, or expect monies to not be spent that actually are spent, we're gonna end up another year down the same path of worse off than we were at the beginning of the year. So we need to take a real hard look at this right now and consider whether these funds can be used or whether they cannot, because this council has time and again counted on things that do not come through, and has landed us in a position that we're in, this drastic position that we're in. So we need to take a hard look at that and find out for certain whether these are legal, whether we can use the railroad money, and whether we can use the garbage money legally.
Madam Chair, would you, you have a note, would you like to comment now?
I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
So moving right along, that's the general fund line, or I could say, I'm taking upon those two items, whether or not they'll come out, which will be $200,000 or $300,000. The others are the regular expenses, I mean revenues, that we have for 14, again, it's just showing what the projection is, and a lot of instances are projected would be received, would be received in 14, which is the white column, with the white column. So, you know, there's not much change there between the two columns.
Are you looking at the ambulance billing conservatively for 215?
I mean, yes.
Yes, okay.
Right, and we have information that that went up quite a bit within the next year. So I think we had, what is it, $625,000 the prior year, so after speaking with the staff and also looking at the revenue, you know, we're projected to go like $660,000 or above on the ambulance bill.
Madam Chair, to the new fire chief, did Jurassic at the time bring something forth to council in order for us to go to the attorney general to help us collect some of the ambulance billing, and how far did that go? Did it land, so tell me?
Yeah, as far as I know, it did. We streamlined the way we report the billing, it was a better program, and also got more aggressive collection, and it really boosted.
It did, it did help a little.
Do you speak about the ambulance bill?
Yeah, ambulance bill.
Yes, they installed a new software package in March, and my understanding from speaking with White Force is that it's real-time versus a lag of a month or so, and because of the handwritten information, we were losing a lot of the documentation that we could bill for, so the efficiency has caused the increase in the revenue.
Okay, so not, not the collections from the attorney general?
I think you're talking about something, you're talking about the government bills or, you're talking about the attorney general was having to collect?
Yes.
Okay, that's different. Okay, that's different.
Okay.
And we are starting, I think we got about $7,000, $8,000 or something there, so that's coming in, so to be fair to the family. So, moving right along, unless you have any questions, we'll flip to page four. And then, as I said before, you know, I need to get with Ed Rand to go over the capital improvement information, and the grants, and the OPWC and all of that.